For a total unit count of 58 units. This application submitted by Somerville Multifamily LLC represents a multi-year effort in coordination with the borough for the redevelopment of South Bridge Street. As noted in the planning report, the applicant's proposed site is in full conformance with the principal use of the ECDB redevelopment area plan. The efforts with the developer and borough resulted in a resolution dated July 6, 2020, designating the applicant as the redeveloper via Resolution 200706-174. At that time, the Borough Redevelopment Committee found that the, quote, "The proposal has been reviewed and it's found consistent with the redevelopment plan for redevelopment in the area." And it should be noted, at that time, when the applicant was designated as the redeveloper of July 6, 2020, the building was very different than it was, than it is today, proposed. It was six stories in height, had substantially less parking, more units, more variances. I think it's worth mentioning that the ECDB redevelopment area was amended, essentially to clear up some density issues related to the maximum residential density requirements in the overlay districts. During the design phase, the proposed building was redesigned by our count at least four or five times, which resulted in a substantial reduction in unit count by removing one level of the structure. The allowable height in the zone is six stories or 90 feet, and the building height was reduced to five stories or 74.3 feet. We also increased the subterranean parking deck to provide substantially more parking. Just by comparison, the Davenport project was approved with 66 parking spaces for 60 apartments. That's a 1.1 parking space per unit ratio. Cobal, 117 units, 109 parking spaces, plus 32 in the Sanatio Deck for a total parking ratio of 1.205 parking spaces per unit. DGM Station House, 117 units and 120 parking spaces, a 1.025 ratio. And the redesign of this project now drastically increases the parking spaces from 75 to 91, which is a ratio of 1.57 parking spaces per use, per unit. The applicant is excited to present this application in the further redevelopment of South Bridge Street for high-end residential project that will complement the Oak Steakhouse restaurant directly adjacent to the current site, which was approved two weeks ago. By way of zoning relief, the applicant has identified the following C-bolt variances, which deviates from the overlay zone bolt requirements as follows. There's three pre-existing variants. One is minimum lot area, 24,000 square feet is required. We're at 23,432. Minimum locked up, 180 feet is required. We're at 154.27. Rear yard, 25 is permitted, and 13 is proposed. For parking spaces, we have the variance, 117 is required, which is a reduction related to the reduced unit count. 14 spaces are existing and 91 are proposed. There's also a variance created by enlarging the apartments, where the ordinance requires a minimum of 35% one bedrooms. However, in this application, there's only 22% one-bedroom apartments. There's also variance for height in setback that exceeds the ratio for the ECDB zone. Height shall not exceed one foot for each foot of horizontal distance of such portion from the EPR district, whereas the ratio exceeds one foot for each foot of horizontal distance, as well as for window area. Forty percent of the first floor is required to contain windows, whereas 26% is proposed, essentially due to the parking louvers and the ventilation needed for the parking deck. Waivers pursuant to ordinance 10269. We have a site lighting uniformity ratio where 4:1 average ratio is required and 22.2 is proposed. I'll have our site plan engineer address that, as well as the site elimination at the property line. Again, recall, this has an ingress and egress on the front of the property, so site elimination, I think, is appropriate there. The street trees. Our prior application had none proposed, but we were able to push the building back to give some more space on the sidewalk, so we're now proposing three trees where four is required. So we'll need a waiver for that. There's also waivers related to light, delivery truck, vertical clearance, and access aisle width, which our engineer can address. So just, I'll play the part of board attorney for a second. The board needs to make a finding that this isn't, that this application wasn't already heard, concept called res judicata. And the law talks about, the case law talks about standards. Is it substantially similar? Is it the same parties? Are there no substantial changes? Was there adjudication on the merits? Same cause of action? And the courts have gone through a series of cases that kind of discuss res judicata. The case I'm going to rely on, well, the seminal cases, Bressman v. DeGash. It's a 1993 case. And they say that, you know, essentially, the applicant has to contain sufficient changes. Another case says this, first board of trustees, the South Orange. In the facts, in that case, there was a side yard setback variance. The variance was eliminated or lessened, and the board found that it was a different application. There's a series of other cases which I can go through, but suffice to say that we're removing several variances, and we feel that there's no issue with res judicata. Specifically, and as we, as I had indicated, we're increasing the parking spaces from 75 to 91, which reduces the parking variance from 62.5% in compliance to 77.77 in compliance. Reducing the apartments from 60 to 58, which again reduces that parking demand. We're increasing the square footage for several apartments after comments from the board at the September hearing, and reduces the unit count, which improves that 8% deviation that's permitted by the ECDB redevelopment plan, although we don't need a variance or waiver for that. We get more into conformity. We've also been able to push the building back as much as we can to expand the front sidewalk width, so now we have a full compliant sidewalk width. It's pretty tight on that road, so that allows us for pedestrian space, ingress and egress space, and allows for trees along South Bridge. The plan's also been revised to add, essentially, the comments from the board. Additional landscape offering and green space on the southern border adjacent to the residential zone. So we've added the foundation plannings, sidewalks, the grass areas, the park benches, and a six-foot-high privacy fence. Adding the three street trees and the planters, where zero was proposed the last time, and adding the off-street parking space in the parking deck, which eliminates another variance for a minimum one off-street space. So with me tonight, I have Dave Stires, our civil engineer, Rocco Campanella, our architect, Gary Dean, our traffic engineer, Elizabeth McManus, our professional planner. We also have Sam Perdary on the here, on behalf of the applicant, who's been in town for 20, 30 years, almost, and it's taken him many years to acquire the lots necessary to do a, to a project, you know, relatively small-scale apartment project. Unless there are any legal questions, I guess I would ask that the board act on the res judicata issue on the record, and then...
Proceed. How do we do that?
Just make a motion that there needs to be a finding that it's...
Are there any questions, or is there any discussion?
It's, I'm an E in the report, some of the criteria that Mike referred to. And Mike, did you mention the loading area internal to, that's a change to?
Yeah, we eliminate the variance with, we're adding a loading space.
Right.
And just so everybody knows, I have a lot of discussion with Kara about this issue, and she concurs that res judicata does modify.
That was the question I had in my notes. If you talk about this turnabout that, will that have to be part of the official record? Once we make the motion, that'll go into the resolution?
Yes. The standard in Bressman v. DeGash is that the second application must contain sufficient changes.
If you run, that, that sounds kind of shady. I'm just saying that, is it a substantial change or not?
Yes.
If the answer's yes, then it's yes. It doesn't have to be, we don't have to agree.
We have to, we have to vote on this.
No, but I mean, we don't have to...
He's saying, what's the definition of a substantial?
What's substantial? This is the second legitimate term I've learned here in 22 years. The minimus.
Okay.
So you're, so you're saying our lawyer has said that she found that this was a new application?
Yes.
I'll go with the professional.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, since I was not here to have the benefit of the first application, I have to abstain on this.
So am I moving?
But it's a, granted, it's a different application.
But I don't know, it is substantially different.
I think he's abstaining from just the...
Yeah, on this, on this one, I don't know, but it is substantially different.
Mr. Chairman, Cliff's here. He's the zoning board attorney, official stepping in.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, I hit a little bump in the, hit a little bump on the way up. Let me just, can I, may I just, because I, I think it might be important. If anybody has a Honda, small Honda SUV with a, with a Somerville wrestling sticker on the back, my mirror scraped against your, my mirror scraped you. You know, the cars are all parked very close together in that area. But in the process of getting a parking, I scraped my, my side, my right side mirror against what looks like your gas tank. It's got some stickers on it. You know, I just want, in the interest of honesty and integrity, I want to make sure somebody knows that. If it's anybody here, let me know what's discussed, what we can do about it. There's no, it's, it's not major damage, it'll buff out, but I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that you know. Anyway, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, please proceed. I apologize for the interruption, for being late.
Cliff, we were just going over, I'm sorry. We were, Michael had go over some of the case law, and he went through the changes in the application, what's being proposed, and we were discussing whether res judicata applies. It's I of E in the report, so that's what Michael was doing. And we were just, he was essentially saying what the differences are between the two applications, and I put back at the report thinking that they would be more detailed, but Michael was saying that it should be determined upfront, as opposed to hearing everything, then making determinations. That's why I put it at E, but he would rather have that determination now as opposed to doing the testimony. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a threshold question.
So, Cliff, just so you know.
Seems to me that, it seems to me that it is a jurisdictional issue, but I...
Here, this is...
Lawyerize myself with everything in paper.
Okay. That's what I put in there, is that, just out of cox.
I would, I would say that res judicata does not apply in that the board has jurisdiction here in the application, having already reviewed, having already reviewed the materials earlier today. So I believe that the board can go forward and hear this without fear of, you know, without fear of that being concluded by res judicata.
You want to make a motion and note on that thing?
Yeah, I will, I will move, it is not based on two different lawyers' opinions, and the third, it does not apply here, and we move forward.
Want to do roll call?
You're on it.
Hey, Bernie, the bottom.
Yes.
You do the sense.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
I abstain on this motion. You got to vote it, or else I was not here to...
Landry at there, yes. Al Kraske?
Yes.
Jason Plaskett?
Yes.
Art Akins? Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Christopher Addick?
Yes.
Ken Utter?
Yes.
Okay. So our first witness, I'm going to go on the square. Everybody in the same panel?
Where, that's fine. All right, raise your right hand, please. This is always written, the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stires, would you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, so we can...
David Stires, S.T.I.R.E.S., professional engineer, planner, estate agent.
Very good. Please proceed, counsel. You might want to figure the board with the witnesses' qualifications. He's been...
Not necessary.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Stires has been before us many times.
Very good. I'm similarly familiar with Mr. Stires from work I do, so the board can stipulate this to his credentials.
So, I think the board's pretty familiar with the project. There's four existing dwellings right across South Bridge Street from where we are today, across from the parking lot, and south of the alleyway that goes back to Warren Street and behind Verve. We'll both take down those four dwellings and build a five-story parking complex, which will consist of four stories of apartments and a lower-level apartment with two subterranean parking levels, so three total parking levels. The proposal, as Michael indicated, is for 58 apartments, 13 one-bedroom and 45 two-bedroom. There is a 770 square foot retail portion on the first floor, 770 square foot retail area, and 91 parking spaces in the three, three mothers apartments. As Michael had indicated previously, the initials, the changes relative to the initial submission include shifting the building back by two feet and eliminating the variance for the sidewalk, which required the minimum of eight feet, or about nine, nine and a half feet now. We increased the parking from 75 spaces to 91 spaces, which increases our ratio to 1.57 spaces per unit. As he indicated, we also added landscaping. We have the three planters in the patio air, the bay area, sidewalk area in front of the apartments, and then we added a series of shrubs and trees along the southern portion of the building, where we have the sidewalk and the benches that run back into the alleyway. Maybe we can run through the variances here, or just explain the variances. So we have minimum lot area, 24,000 square feet, and pre-existing conditions, 23,432, so it's slightly under what is required. The minimum lock depth is 180 feet, and we're at 154.27. Again, that's pre-existing. The rear yard requirement is 25 feet, and we're at 13 feet. And then parking is 117 spaces required, with 91 spaces are proposed. Then there's that front facade window requirement of 40%, with roughly 26%. And Rocco can get into that in further detail. And then the side yard, height, one foot for each one foot of building. We deviate from that requirement as well.
How much deviation? What is the deviation? There's no numbers.
The, what, the building's at 16 feet from the side yard setback, and then we set it back five feet twice as we go up in stories. And I, Rocco has the calculation. I didn't even go into that in detail. And then the minimum, or the number of one-bedroom apartments, minimum 25% is required, and we're proposing 22%, or 35% is required. Get into... I'll just go through a few more things. The, the lighting is similar to what we proposed in the initial design. We do have wall packs that run on the south, and the east end of the building that are eight feet high. We do have water mount, let's call these in the front. And then we have the area lighting in three different areas of the front facade that run up the building to light up the facade a bit. And again, Rocco can talk about that. Again, the landscaping I talked about. Drainage is via a oversized storm pipe that runs from the rear of the property around the southern end and out to a storm system in the sidewalk in South Bridge. We have a outlet structure that has a porphyse that restricts the flow to a four-inch pipe that is draining into the storm system in South Bridge Street, and reduces the rate of runoff to, pretty consistent with the current conditions. But that's the proposal, I think, I guess the next step would be to get through Mike's report. Dave, just say you'll comply.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that, you know, that disagree with. Right, Mr. Stires?
Yeah, I think most of it's pretty straightforward. I had a question about the loading space height, if it matched the ambulance and the van accessible space. I think that'd be a Rocco question on that. The board might want to consider eliminating the street trees because the sidewalk is still very narrow. I had questioned that in the report. Yeah, I know you have four-by-eight grates, but you got to put the tree a couple of feet off the curb so you get alongside Park Street, otherwise you're going to hit it. So you end up with a tree two, three feet in, and you really end up again with four feet or five feet of sidewalk.
And it's also where the loading zone is?
Well, the loading zone's inside, but I just, I think it's too tight, is what I'm saying.
So, so would you be willing to make a contribution in lieu of the trees?
Certainly.
And, Dave, the chairman, we had the same discussion two weeks ago with the building to the north.
Right.
And we decided, we shouldn't use trees there. So this is consistent about that?
Right.
Dave, why don't you go through this, and we don't necessarily want to hear what you do agree with, it's only what you don't agree with.
I'm not discussing that. I have a question about the runoff storm. We're, it's a very sensitive issue with us now, especially after a small rain. Is there enough capacity to take the water and get away from the property without having a big issue with that?
We have a slight increase of, you know, less than one CFS. Michael has raised that question, and we would agree to study that system and make sure that pipe has the capacity. And if it doesn't, well, that's size the intention on site.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I appreciate that.
I have a question. That's not, that's the pipe that's on the southern end of the building that we're talking about?
Is that the black dotted line?
Yeah, the black dotted line is the storm system, and then it ties into a storm system that runs from north to south, down South Bridge Street.
Is that the same system that the restaurant that we just proved two weeks ago was going to run down?
Essentially, yes.
Same thing?
It's tied into the same system, yeah.
Is that going to all?
That's part of the questions I have, to show what the existing capacity is. Is there basically free board for this additional runoff?
Because we've accounted for...
And accounting for the Oak. And the testimony of Oak was, he was going to rearrange it potentially, so the runoff would be split. Right now, some of the Oak goes to Main Street. So I pointed out, he was pushing it all down, staying later. He said he was going to try to make it equal. So we're going to address all that.
Okay. So, going through this, we're going through the storm board, and even what?
Yeah, at lighting, the discrepancy with the averages is really due to the fact that when you come out of the parking area, we have that really lit up. So the ratios get to, so that's why we're asking for the deviation.
Yeah, and I understand that. I had a question, there's some code word, I think we had in the other application. There's a couple of street utility poles I'd like to see addressed, if they could be. Yes.
Well, to the extent possible, I don't know. We have to work with PSENG. We have a 10-foot minimum requirement between the pole and the building, and we don't read that. We've had discussions. We're at the end of the line, so the tower's coming from the south. And I think there's just, there's like one line that runs into the building to the north, and I think there's one that goes into the police station. So we're hoping we can go underground to our site, and if we have to go to the next site over, we're going to try to look that up. But I think, yes, we have to get rid of that hole.
And Dave is showing the pad mountain transformer on the northeast corner. And I don't know how they can get the conduit there because of the...
Yeah, you can quieten it. PSENG typically requires a 24, even if you have utilities in it, and a problem with that. The way, the only way to get to that transformer is to go right on top of this pipe and right close to the storm pipe. But there might be, there might be some flexibility there. And the one, in different applications, we actually put the transformer in the building. The one on Davenport, the transformer's in the building with double doors. I'm just saying, don't, it might not work. There's solutions, but...
Bernie, go ahead, just procedural, do we have to mark these exhibits since they're doing, is it for the right of singing?
Actually, let me insert a question. Mr. Stires, are these the exhibits which you submitted with the application, or have they been, have they been altered?
This one has been altered with the coloring, and we also call it a rendering. And what we do is we do a composite.
What I'd like to do is mark that as applicant's A1 in evidence. Please do that. Date it tonight, 3/23/22, and that'll be our first, that's our first exhibit of the evening.
Can we just make sure that they didn't mark any report? I know Tony always marks evidence. She sent me a bunch of stuff earlier. I could just see if he marked it or not.
Probably up to now.
If it was submitted with the application, it does have to be marked as evidence, because it's already part of the record. If it has been, if, if, if it's been submitted more recently than that, then that becomes a question, yes.
So he's referring to, we typically start the marking after the first three or four of what the package was. So we start in four or five, but you have to know what the original three were. That's what he's bringing up.
Right, I, I did get some of the materials, but not all of them, but I...
Why don't you start A10, go up, and then it'll be covered.
And with the date on it, you'll be able to tell.
A10 being, we don't have, we don't have submissions on A9 before.
All right, A10 and the record will reflect that the submissions already, already filed with the, by the applicant will be considered as applicant's exhibits A1 through A9 inclusive. You may proceed.
Landscaping, we're already, we're making the changes I was in number four. And we talked about eliminating the street trees in lieu of the contribution.
What kind of fence is going up on the, her six-foot fence, man? Is it a plastic one, a wooden one?
Yeah, it's a white vinyl, and then it drops down once it gets into the sidewalk at the four feet. Goes from six to four.
So six by the sidewalk and then drops down?
Four. Yeah, it drops down, I think, 25 feet, I believe.
And the six comes right to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And that's not going to have a...
No, it's four feet.
That's not...
Out by the front, by the sidewalk, it's four feet.
It's the other way around?
The six is in the back, as you come to the front.
Because you need to...
If you walk around the property, it's a six-foot fence or a privacy.
Okay.
And when you get to the front...
You need to drop it down.
It steps down to four feet, and then there's a rail in the front with a gate, right?
Yeah, with a gate, yeah.
I do believe that's all four feet. So it's four feet, this is the front yard.
Okay, all right, that makes most of the six.
Okay, so it's...
It all would have to be four feet.
Right, and then you go back, it's 25 feet or so, because it steps up to six.
Twenty-four feet back, it jumps up to four.
Twenty-four feet, so then when you're driving down the street, you're not going to see a blank wall, but you're going to see open. You don't see, you don't see that fence at six foot, it should be going twenty-four feet back.
Okay, that's what I...
It should be 24 feet back from the, from the alleyway, from the parking lot. Okay, so it's going to be from the road, add another eight feet to that, so 32 feet back, you're going to have a transition, essentially.
It'll function like a residential corner lot, where you have to respect the sightlines.
Right.
Yeah, but a residential corner lot, it's not going to be eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Dave, I have a question. Is anywhere where there's excessive lighting spillage, is that on the southern, is any of that on the southern side of the building?
Is it residential?
Yeah, I don't think so. You know, I think the fence will block, you know, the lights themselves are all eight feet high, and the fence in most... feet high and the fence in most areas is six, but if we see a problem, we can...
And what kind of fixtures are those again?
They're fancy wall packs.
Are they hooded?
Yeah, they're full cut off. They're cut off, they're recessed, they're...
I had a question with light temperature.
It's not coming out the side like a wall pack, it's coming in.
Okay.
It's coming down and the light temperature, we should match the area, we talked about that. Three thousand or four thousand cavils, this is fantastic. We had, so we had a note on it.
How yellow is it?
How gray?
Obviously, you can go up from the yellows, but metal polydil days, you go, it's a whiter, whiter, not lighter.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Solid, I mean, stick elevations.
You okay with the landscaping?
Yeah.
Dave, are you going to cover trash, is that going to be Rocco, the frequency of pickup, how that's going to work in that utility room, the trash room, is that Rocco?
Okay. I mean, we'll pick it up as much as required and I think the containers that you're looking at on the plan are smaller than they should be. It's a much bigger room, so the container should be bigger.
The San Francisco City Board notes, it's tying into a main that's literally starts at the site and is about a foot off of the foundation, oh, the old foundation, so it's going to be more room. I had questioned the integrity because it's unmaintained streets, so we're going to videotape that and see what's going on there, Dave.
Yep.
And they're going to need a PWA apartment, we'll be over eight thousand dollars.
Over eight thousand, yes.
Okay, so you're okay with the Senatory Seward comments?
Yes. I had some traffic study, this is the basic comments, I guess this is for Gary, right? Yeah. General comments, utility poles we talked about.
Yep.
Transformer we talked about. The emergency action plan, that's going to be a condition, make sure the board approve it for OEM or Eddie Jason's bellywag to review that emergency management plan, Jason for whatever.
I have a question about the transformer. If you have to move it in the building, what do you have to move? What do you give up inside the building?
Haven't really studied that.
Yeah. We're going to have to see how that works out. If it takes away from parking spaces or something else, we'll come back to the board for a minute's site plan. If it reduces it, if it's not something that takes away from anything, that doesn't, it's not seen by the public, I would say that order has to be seen for them.
We have, there's some corners that maybe we can fit it in.
Yeah.
There's some dead space in that, in that parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I think we're through Mike's report as it concerns interviewing. Right. Bernie, I have some parking questions, is that for Dave or for Mr. Dean? You've increased the number of parking spaces, changing the ratio, but we had discussion at this table recently about the new EV regulations in terms of spaces that are going to have to be dedicated to, you know, electric hookups over the next three years, is it? Fire, you have to supply your facing, they're essential.
Yeah, I think they're...
They will be?
Yeah, man, I put down the report that the ordinance is now on the books, but the time of decision will change, Michael, so this theme was deemed complete.
Before.
Before the ordinance...
Doesn't apply, yeah.
That's my opinion, doesn't comply and I, I said the report, the applicants encouraged to do this unless the board feels otherwise.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Deemed complete on the application, that was when?
Uh, December. Is it December, Mike? End of December, I do believe, was deemed complete. We didn't, the ordinance was renewed because of some noticing problem, I think in January and the law changed about six years ago. It used to be time of the hearing, right?
It used to be time of, it used to be time of decision and now it's time of application.
Yeah.
So that's, the law changed several years ago pursuant to a Supreme Court decision. So it's, and the MOU has caught up with it, so it's at the time the application is filed.
And deemed complete.
And deemed complete, yeah, pursuant to the Dunbar Homes case, which affirmed that it's now, it's considered complete.
So, my question is, how hard is it to convert parking spaces to electrical charging stations? Is it going to change the amount of electricity that's to come into the building or it's just, because, I mean, if you have, you have ninety-one spaces and let's say it could be the cars are electric cars, they're going to be wanting to charge them when they drive home at night. So, is it something that you can retrofit the building easily or is it something that will change, um, the infrastructure? Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think the customer, the renter are going to, you know, require it eventually.
Yeah, I just don't want it to change the building somehow because of the requirements of...
In other applications, we, you know, would create it, it's kind of prep it for that next transition, you know, but I'm sure they'll do that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I just make a suggestion that we make compliance with Mr. Cole's report, a condition of approval subject to any changes made in the course of the hearing this evening?
Yep.
Does the applicant have any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay, it'll be a condition of approval. Okay, thanks.
Public.
When we do that now, we're like, I'll open it up to public now.
Do a witness by witnesses.
Yeah, anybody have any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
I don't have a question, but got a request to make of you, that part of the condition of approval be they enter into a redevelopment agreement with the public through my office.
Yes.
By the way, I'm Colin Drive, the Director of Economic Development.
Yes, sir, I don't know. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. I'm the owner, Frank Michael, we, I'm the owner of Block sixty-two lot one and I'm concerned on these projects, I addressed the letter to Bernie, I don't know if you received it or not.
Was it recently?
Yes.
No, it didn't.
Okay, just take me one second and it's nothing really that's going to affect what you're hearing tonight except in the future. I'm the owner of Block sixty-two, lot nineteen, which is accessed from Warren Street. Now, the impact of the potential projects, Oak and Somerville Motley Family can hopefully, my, my property, I'd like to be able to be part of the discussion or have it, part of the discussion prior to the construction as to how it will affect my property. Because my property, it's accessed off of Warren Street, it's a big access and it butts right against, well, sixty-two one, I own sixty-two nineteen, I'm sorry. It butts against, well, Harriet's property, which is Blitzer property and all the construction traffic is probably going to come in off of Warren Street and my concern...
I don't, we had the same discussion last month with Oak and I think what we have to ensure is that any encroachment on your property includes conversations with...
That's all I'm asking for. Yep, thank you.
That's reasonable, I'm agreeing.
I'm Harriet Goodman, W. B. Vermoni Company. I'd like to know who is the developer and the borough coordinators? So if there's people we have to reach out to for information or status update, I want to know who are the people that we can contact as business owners in the area who are responsible for doing the coordination between the developers and the borough?
The gentleman sitting right next to you. Thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully a better crowd.
And if I have to go ahead and...
You're the developer?
Construction office?
Construction office.
Yeah, the construction...
Alan is the point person.
Yes. Alan will handle the problems, any problems, any information, the quickest way possible.
All right, I actually have something I want to read, you know, on the record with this, similar to what I said two weeks ago. As President of W. B. Vermoni Company, I would like to go.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to be personistic, ordinarily you have, ordinarily statements are reserved until the applicant's case in chief is put in. This, you know, doing the questions as we're doing them now, the questions are limited to the, ordinarily limited to the testimony given by the applicant's experts at the time.
Okay.
So, my recommendation would be, again, I'm not trying to exalt form over substance, but that is the law in that situation. It doesn't mean you can't give the statement, just it should be done after the, after the application has been completed.
I understand, thank you.
We will have an opportunity to do that.
And we will be doing a construction phase of the plan, Dave, and we'll throw it out.
We'd like to be notified.
Okay, anybody else? We'll close the public session.
Our next witness is another local professional, Rocco Campanella, from Architect Bush.
Hi, good evening. Would you raise your right hand, please? If you saw and we swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter would be the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Rocco Campanella. C.A.M.P.A.N.E.L.A.L.A. Okay.
Your witness counsel?
Mr. Campanella, has anything changed with respect to your professional license since the last hearing?
No.
And testified before numerous claims of courses of the State of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
I would ask, Mr. Campanella?
You do.
Is our expert...
Thank you. So, we, you know, one of the things we were talking about earlier, that we came away from the last presentation and listened and addressed the issues and came back with an application that I hope we find in line, architecturally, we reduced the count of, you know, sixty-five-eight, we're able to pick up square footage, so we actually addressed a couple of issues. One was bringing the parking ratio up, just automatically reducing the number of units and the other was to, you know, increase the size of a couple of units that were there. Ironically, I, we're always, you know, the, one of the requirements was the twenty-five, thirty-five percent of the, it seemed to be one bedroom, but picking up the square footage, we actually were back down to about twenty-two percent or so. The other aspect of it was the, you know, addressing the issues that were mostly related to site plan issues, I think you'll hear the testimony from traffic that addressed some of the safety concerns. If, if I may, what I'll do is up, I closed the first view, which is right from South Bridge Street, slightly southern side. The building is essentially a three-story, you know, PPR parking garage. One, one level is a grade and the other two are below grade. We have a small amount of retail space, you know, on the ground floor, seven hundred square feet and change. And by adding actually, you know, the second level, the second tier of parking, not only do we, you know, get the ratio up to about one point five-seven, I believe, which was substantially higher than the previous application, but we also picked up some, an additional level of utility space, which will come in handy when dealing with the buildings such as, you know, the gas and water and connections to the, all the utilities. The building is architecturally, we treated the building equally on all sides, we managed to put on a nice facade and kind of limited that to the, only to the front, you know, what you see is a, pretty much a whole brick building with the features in, in, in the cast stone, that fans that go around the building that create some of the base and entrance effort. We tried to make the ground floor look town town, look retail-like. In fact, one of the, one of the aspects of it was the creating, originally we had a lot of glass space, even over the garage area, which you see those grills on the right side, but in preliminary conversations, we are MVP consultant, we're going to need some of those grills to get ventilation through the garage and we made a promise, which we'll continue to make, that if we limit those amount of grills to just the minimal necessary, we got the cross ventilation for closed parking garage design, we will change those to glass so that it appeared to be glass. They appear to be glass, store front light now, but between the large overhead door, it's twenty-six feet wide, entrance to the complex, little retail space, a little bit of glass to do that to the, to the side of the entrance, you know, we, we put in just about as much glass as we possibly could. And ironically, if all of that could be glass, including those, we'd be at over forty-two, we just couldn't do it with the requirements. So we're being conservative, I think, in terms of what the grills need to be and I'm hopeful that some of that can turn into spangled glass. The garage is totally enclosed, so that it's a closed parking garage, you're not going to see any of the cars from the street. The access is pretty much down the middle of the building. One of the critical things about this building that I wanted the board to understand is that we're really down in critical mass when it comes to the size of a parking garage. Parking garages by nature are extremely expensive, though, and I'm sure you know that because you have quite a few in here. And there's a certain amount of dimension that we need to get the aisles, parking spaces and, you know, configuration to work. In fact, ours is not totally efficient because we, we do have two drives and we have, one is double loaded, the other could only be single loaded. So we are as close to the side property line as we think we should be, we're about sixteen feet and ironically that building height at that point is about sixteen feet, which respects that ratio of one to one for setbacks, but we really couldn't make it any smaller, we couldn't even make it a foot smaller or two feet smaller. We would have to reduce the drive aisle sizes, which would not make it as safe, so keeping it at twenty-four with the usual spaces, you know, eight feet, we're happy and we think it's a safe setup in terms of, in terms of that. So from there, we zoned the podium to build the other residential floors. The setback requirements on the south side, you know, require that for every foot that we go up, you need to be over the same amount. So what we did was, if you look at that, at the rendering, you'll notice that the first floor is about sixteen feet, it only goes back about five feet, so we should be, by ordinance, ten feet back. And then do the same for every floor we go up, so the setback, if we had forty feet, it should be forty feet from the sideline. When we tried that design, it made, it made it impossible to develop the right number of units that makes us feasible. So we said, can we make an attempt to respect that? We make an attempt to create the terracing effect and this is our solution to that, where we go back five feet, we go up two floors and go back five feet and I think part of the building's success is not only just having a setback, but having interest in textures and colors in terms of how playful, you know, the ordinances are. We're very sensitive to, you know, what Somerville is and I've been in Somerville a long time and, you know, I walk downtown a lot just to get a sense of what that feel is and I wanted a building that fit right into that Somerville architectural style, if you would, which has a, kind of a, the base is, you know, this is, this is not a modern building, this is not a traditional building, this is somewhere in the middle. And I think we were successful in terms of building that often, creating the interest at the top of buildings, which you see often in downtown, the pedidants and tops and toruses, we're able to play with three different colors of brick at the accent, the, in the cast stone, or some of it in around windows and shrins. And, but also what that helped us to do is to hide all the stuff that is on the roof, which is the condo with it and the rooftop terrace, which is for the residents and the residents only. I'm going to, I'm going to go up and show you the other sides of the building. You all have the same residence that I'm about to show you, but just in case you have any questions about the other three sides, I'm just going to go up and do that. Of course, we also have one that is... And of course, we also have one that is about the rooftop. The rooftop is accessible from... It is accessible from two stairwells and elevator. We have full access. It's fully screened for mechanical equipment. The view, or the view we're focusing on, our residence too, is a look south of the valley. So, we're blocking the units that are right on the left. You're not going to be able to see any equipment up there. And one of the things that we do in the construction is that we could also keep an eye on that door construction. Sometimes between design and construction documentation from the drawings, things that move around. So, if anything is seen, we'll make sure we screen it. But we think we have enough now to do the job. We accounted for all the units. It's preliminary, but it's very, I think it's as detailed as you could be at this level. So, view A is from South Bridge Street. Same, same side of the street, except it's from, you know, a little bit further north. You can see how we wrapped it around the tree, but we felt this corner was kind of important, so...
Mr. Campanella, I won't interrupt you. Your perspective view A will be applicant's exhibit A-11, and perspective view B, which we're looking at now, will be applicant's exhibit A-12. And that's still same day as this evening?
No, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Sorry, but...
I'm interrupting. We have... All the finishes were returned, and we kind of created an interesting corner, because that'll be kind of, as you drive, you know, south, it'll be an interesting feature. Okay. See, we went a little bit higher. People don't really see it this way, but we wanted to show you this to give you a full effect of the terrace and how effectively it is. Not only the terrace in the back, but we also played with the features of wing walls for privacy and some equipment. We've shown a little bit of the rooftop. You can see where some of the cordices are screening the equipment, even at this level, and how we're installing a screen between the amenity space and the front and the back of the facility.
Record will reflect this as applicant's exhibit A-13.
A-14 will be the, as we're going around the building, and we're seeing the right side elevation and the back. It's in shadow, so it's looking a little darker. We try to put the sun accurately on these red links, so you also get a sense of that. You'll notice that, just as in the front, we get cross ventilation, we have grills also on the side and the back. One of the things that came up was a question about, you know, where do we put things like generators and equipment and mechanical stuff as needed? You'll notice on the floor plans, we have, I think, substantial room. You know, we have some bike storage next to the bike storage. We have a very large utility space in the parking tier. We have two front areas, a thousand square foot each, and two different levels. Plenty of room for all those utility companies to go at it. And unfortunately, we don't, we don't always know exactly what they want until we're right down the wire. And, but they do want access to their stuff very easily and quickly. So, we think we have enough opportunities to create that, you know, in the side yard if necessary, or inside a building, though, except that.
Rocco, when you say side yard, we're not talking about having a million gas meters out there.
Yeah, no, what I'm thinking is, one of the things that we go through with utility companies at the design, at the public stage for design builders, will ask the opportunities where to put in things that they would like to see. And then the conversation starts, and then we'll come back to the resolution and say, well, can we do that? We'll see if there are conditions related to that that limit us from doing certain things or not. But we obviously don't want anything on a building. That's the goal. If it is somewhere, we're going to screen it, we're going to landscape it, we're going to buffer it, we're going to put it out of sight, you know, whatever possible. You don't want to see it, and we don't want to see it.
Right.
So, that's it. A-15 is also in shadow, so it looks a little dark. We're going around the building, and so we're showing the left side elevation, a little bit of the rear. It's also a little bit of a per side, giving you a relationship. Here, you can pick up where the stairwells come up to the rooftop terrace on two sides. The elevator and house comes up next to the one stair. You enter that space and are able to enjoy that amenity. In case of a, of an event, you have two fire stairwells and bring it down.
Is the green line, is the property line with the gray, the dark gray is, or with the grass is?
Yes. The property line is essentially delineated by that long right here. So, you can see where they're at.
That's a little off. Yeah, Jason.
So, it's the grass line on the south side of the elevator?
No. And you can also see the back is, the grass line also continues in back. And that's an interesting feature, is in terms of having a sidewalk that really connects the front to the back with some benches and seating and some nice space to hang out. And, you know, the second stairwell comes out here as an E-res, so loads on that side. Final architectural view is this. Is the rooftop terrace, you can see this from the south side, looking back down. You put the much higher per side, and you show, but the units up back there, right? Those are the stairwells, you know, you have the elevator court. It comes in, we created a trellis where it's opening in the center, where open court, rather, the trellis and the just a trellis board, creating a little bit of shade for people that are sitting under the trellis with some seating. We have a nice glass rail on the south side, so you can look through the glass rail and through the valve. We've got some landscaping and planters there. You're nowhere near the edge of the roof. You're quite a distance from the edge of the roof. And we put decorative gravel there, so someone could not get too close to the edge of the roof. We also have, here, as you can see, a three-cordice decorative caps that kind of dress up that elevation. And you also got a better view of that side yard on the south side and the few benches on the sidewalk.
One of the other things that...
How high is the exterior wall on the top floor? How high is the exterior wall on the top floor?
The parapets are really not walls. They're just low parapets or just above the roof. It could be a couple of feet off the roof, so that the railing, the glass rail can kind of go over and past that.
So, that might not fall off, is what I'm trying to find.
No, no, the glass rail is well inside the edge of the roof. So, once you're on the edge of that roof, you go, you know, it's going to take effect, and you'll have to be tied down and do all the nice things. As a matter of fact, on the one side, where we have mechanical equipment, we even went as far as showing protection guards for people working on equipment. So, we have that shown there, which is really not usually handled at this stage. But we wanted to kind of capture all the aspects early. The barriers for the, for the screen equipment, you know, are, you know, the heights of the doors. So, they'll be seven, eight feet high, because we, we don't want the noise, and we don't want to see them. So, that would be a best rate. But one of the things that we, you know, went through on the last presentation, that was really important, is to give everyone a sense, you know, nobody sees the building like this. This is just really industry design. But we wanted to take four views, and we took some time and some of the board members to figure out where those four views would be important from. And we did that the last time, and we still have that. This would be seven feet.
Eight, seven feet. And that, that is, you know, the other perspective views, let's just call it...
This is actually a frontal montage of a block study of what Oak was going to do at the time. And he kind of gave us permission to use just a... Because that design wasn't very defined. He said, you know, give us the, just the basic block of what you're doing, because we want to, you know, relationship to our building. And we did that, and we put our building next to it, sort of looking, you know, looking south, sort of from that intersection of, you know, the South Bridge. There is our building, and there is the proposal building. Which I understand is looking very close to that original start.
How close are you to the Oak, the proposed Oak?
Close to alleyway.
You are fifteen feet away? Depending on what piece of it.
I think it's one of those.
That little loading dock and a little dumpster area and a couple of steps, you know, fifteen to twenty feet, you know? Existing now, and it kind of stays where it is, you know? We're actually going to be improving our distance from the property line. We were pretty close to the property line. We're going to be five feet plus off the property line. So, we're actually moving our building a little bit more south.
And Oak also is pulling back from where the existing...
Yeah, so it actually will be a decent...
Right.
The next view is actually from the lawn, from the courthouse in the church. You can barely see our building with the, with the oak development. You can barely catch part of it. But we wanted you to see that, so you could experience it, sitting on the lawn on the north side of the street. Was that the lawn?
That'll be, that's A-18.
Okay. This is the wide street view, which looks through that open parking area. You can see that's up here, elevation as well. And you can see how we're not really picking up the mechanical units, the screen, kind of block the trellis, and you see the tops of the, of the trellises. And actually, as the side goes up, that's really in our favor to be a little bit higher on the orange.
I take, is that A-20?
Okay, this is A-20, correct. And this is from the, the other composite of Veterans Memorial Drive, and that intersection is really much, much, much lower. And you can see how the building, we actually lose a part of our building on north of this. And we can see just a little bit of the top of the trellises. By the way, the trellis is an open trellis, so it's not closed. That's essentially the architectural of exterior design. The floor plan layouts are simple in terms of providing, you know, an access corridor of which the units are. We have no longer amenity space other than the rooftop terrace. So, all the other floors are dedicated strictly to the residents. The ground floor has a little bit of retail, some utility space. We have the bicycle parking and the parking room. And, oh, yeah. Let me remind you of this. So, the trash issue, we have two places, two chutes where people can drop the garbage into the trash area, into some of the lowest level, recycling materials and everything. The trash can can be put on the curb, door, door, door open, pretty much as they do at the Devonport. You know, they, they dolly the containers, the trash chutes fill to the, to the, to the truck and bring it back in. And one of the things that we do during these pools and right after these pools and these presentations is we'll check what a waste management company can make sure that the trash comes the right size, right of attention. Sometimes we have to tweak things, make them a little smaller, make them a little bigger. Maybe they'll want a certain size for it, depending on that activity going through. So, we'll, we'll make that commitment to do that and make sure that it's sized properly.
Rocco, we're going to be trying to pick up the recycling and the trash.
Yeah, and one of the reasons for that is we really, you know, you can just start out, we might have half a building rented or third, you know, we handle it that way. And then increase as we see, you know, the active, the, I think that's the best way to put it in. And, you know, we expect that to be obviously off hours, so that it's done properly as quietly as possible and as quickly as possible.
How many times a week?
How many times a week? I don't have experience in telling you in terms of the number of weeks. What a good waste management company will do will say, okay, we have sixty units, and, you know, let's start out. Half of them are rented. We'll start out, you know, twice a week. But I wouldn't be surprised if it's at least twice a week, possibly more.
Will they be, will they be accessing that to the garage opening? Or is there another area that they're going to access, you know, to get the trash out?
No, they'll have to open the garage door. Yeah, because the dollies are big enough, and which is what they do at Devonport also. You know, the garage door opens up. The dolly is pretty big. It's a, it's a, it's a charge unit. It's sort of a forklift that picks up the dolly, so they move it from where the dumpster area is to the truck, and then the truck, you know, does its thing and bring it back to you.
Is there going to be a maintenance staff on site at all times, or who's bringing the garbage out?
The recycling, the company does...
The company that picks up will go into the garage, get their dolly, bring it out?
Yes, that's definitely what I'm asking.
Is the garbage going to be stored in the, in the garage if you want?
It's in a special room in the garage, which is closed, yes. And that's where the chutes come down into these containers that will contain the grease.
One other question. You were talking about a small amount of retail?
Yes.
Okay. And you had any thoughts, you know, any anticipation or speculation as to that, or...
Yeah, we're hoping for some, you know, quiet user would be a nice amenity for the residents and maybe a coffee shop or something. But it's, it's seven hundred and seventy square feet, so we're not talking, you know, the retail in any stretch. We'll probably use that space, that brings up an interesting question too. We'll probably use that space temporarily if there's a leasing office. Or we can use one of the using, one of the units as the model of the leasing office until such time as the whole place is rented and if the, if the retail space downstairs is not rented, we'll use that for the leasing office and then have to find a leasing place off-site when the building is fully occupied. Possibilities that we could use one of, depending on what we end up doing with the utilities on those two thousand square foot spaces, the possibilities that we could use even one of those two utility spaces as a temporary leasing office, you know, for, because it has elevator access and it would work.
So, the amenities are going to be for the tenants only, not for a third party?
Um...
Amenities?
Like the roof, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, the only, the only people using the rooftop terrace, and yes, of course, are just the residents. It's not letting, you know, for general...
Wouldn't agree not to rent it out or anything like that.
Right, yeah, and we talked about that too.
That's exactly where I was going, Mike.
It's good to talk about this stuff, because you obviously have to set the rules up early, you know, and, but we wouldn't want that for the building, and we wouldn't want that for the, for the other, you know, residents who think that's the right thing to do.
Can you extend the height, the ceiling, floor height for the building area that's then?
Uh, we will do the best that we can, Michael. We have, we have a, if you look at our section, this will look straight at best, we have a building section that will really make our, make the end of the view. If you look at our building section, it's drawn eighteen hundred. Look at the bottom. When you come into that first tier of parking, you have the highest level of that parking lot, because we have the flat body. So, we have sixteen feet penalty. So, if we have structural, that is, you know, a couple of feet deep for structural supports and mechanical, you know, two or three feet, we'll, we'll have substantial amount of room now loading it. It is where the rent does start to go up. So, if you look at that section, and if you look at, there is one car park next to the door, there's another car park next to the column. You can see how it starts at about seventeen feet, so about fourteen feet there. And we will, you know, six percent pitch, but it'll lose a foot or so. But it's, it's pretty good. I think, you know, we got to get through the front door, which is the garage. So, that door is eight and a half feet or so. We're just talking about small bands, main bands. It'll be nice to give this, give the tenants that abilities, so that anything huge, you know, initially, again, we cover the one and two bedrooms, so...
Yeah, box truck is not going to, the new tenants for a van side deal is to be able to use a loading spot, right?
Yes, that's where I was going with this. And I think it's a good suggestion, and it will fit and will work.
Right.
And it's, we took away the three parking spaces to make that happen. And they can use that space anywhere they want. It's right next to the entrance.
I did. The loading space has two columns in it, and I just ignored that, because there's no way to not have the column, so...
Right.
I didn't say anything, because it, it is what it is. We're going to have to deal with it, but the space is the space.
So, there are three levels on the parking, actually?
Yes, he goes down, that, yeah, ground floor and two, so.
The first presentation had two, not helping one down. And we decided that thirty percent of our parking, the only way to go is to go down and it's the town in preference. And we could raise the building because we have the building, but we didn't, we didn't like that idea and you didn't like that idea either. So we decided, okay, let's stay at that height, but let's go down a little bit. So that's why the two down there.
And you were okay with the NFPA thirteen comment?
Oh, absolutely, that's the right recommendation.
Michael, is there anything in your report you want to talk about?
Just the sightline, we might have to do something with the sightline, pedestrians walking down the street coming out. I don't know, it's going to be a mirror, something, some alarm, something that give a warning.
Absolutely, you want to hear this, you want to hear this from Gary that we're, any gain that's made this place safe is, is really in everyone's best interest. So we are planning on doing something with that. I don't have any issues with the rest of the comments made by Michael and Gary and his finding. We're ready to comply.
Yeah, the garage, the parking, they'll be the garage door, they'll go duck them down and.
Great.
And they'll have access to all the other.
Solid door.
And that would be on demand.
Yes.
How noisy is that?
It's, it's a function of, as you say, common money, so, you know, the good stuff is.
Sound, sound is my business, so.
Well, let me say this one.
You know, you open and close it and I'm the head of an apartment nearby, I'm going to hear. I, I have a garage and it goes down, like some of them go like that.
Yes, you know, you know, in your own home, you know, two equipments walk, you know. The advantage that we have here, unlike other, other construction companies, is that, you know, we don't have, we're not wood framed or steel framed, you know. This is going to be poured in place concrete, so we have substantial separation from sound and noise on the ground floor. In fact, we think maybe the whole building may go poured in place concrete, you know, the way things are going with lumber prices these days. So, you know, we just found out the next week, you know, engineer lumber is up, going up thirty percent. It's just, it's madness. So when we did an analysis to look at that, we said, you know what, that makes sense, we'll just stay in our concrete. For sure, the ground floor, the pedestal, will be concrete and so will be the two floors below, the parking garage itself. So that is going to go a long way with sound and issues. We have a bit of a distance between that garage door. We're sixteen feet for, and almost seventeen from the ground floor to the first level. And we're going to lose a couple of feet of structure, so, you know, there's a lot of room between that eight foot six door and those operators, you know. And, and, and we're on the floor, which will be concrete for those first, second floor residents.
Just one other thing, just as soon as covered, but the low, low grade parking is going to have pumps or whatever is needed to make sure water is not just hanging out down there?
Yeah, we're basically building an inside out hole. We're building something that is a pour type and the event for elevators and for other, you know, load spots. We'll have that some way to protect us, you know, from that situation. But the first, using that one of the extensions, making sure that the foundation is sound and work.
I was remembering your previous one, telling us how difficult it is.
Are your elevator systems going to be hydraulic or are they going to be roof mounted?
Uh, they'll be, I'm, I'm not sure, we're talking about elevators, this is three, it's eight stop elevators, so there'll be two of them. Yeah, it could be.
It's probably a traction elevator.
Yeah.
I had one question, you mentioned that you changed some of the size of the apartments for construction reasons. Roughly square footage on the one and two bedrooms. And only have, maybe have minimums, but I just want to hear.
Yeah, we're actually, one of the things that we're going to have on our cover sheet is a residential list where we illustrate what is the average area for one bedrooms and two bedrooms. So the average area for one bedroom is almost eight hundred square feet, seven ninety-one, and for two bedrooms is nine sixty-six.
I just wanted that on the record. Thank you. Any other questions from the board that now open up to the public for questions of this witness? And then we close the public session.
I, I just have one more question. The retail space doesn't show any backups or anything, so it's.
I'm sorry?
The retail space.
Right, well, yeah, we, we obviously will have one, I can promise you that. We tend not to put those in until we know what the tenant wants to do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they'll.
They're not going to be sharing or having to walk to the president's building or something?
No, because we have nothing else provided, so it has to be in there space.
You have to say one other question. In retail space, if it does, if it turns out to be a restaurant, you're going to have to deal with the waste in a much different way. Certain restaurants have a lot of waste.
I would say it's a counter, it will likely not be a restaurant. I meant a coffee shop, maybe, you know, a small bakery, coffee, tea kind of place. I don't see a restaurant working in this small guy.
And you have to put ventilation.
Should there be a kitchen, Rocco, everything have to be bended to the roof, surface on a stick, so there's no waste.
Yeah, and we would hope that, we are fortunate for us, we are next to the elevator shaft, so we might be able to make some adjustments there to get everything through to the roof from that, near that shaft. But we're hoping it's, at best, it's not going to be a formal cooking situation where you have hoods and makeup air and we're just talking about warm-up. You know, it's the kind of place where things might be made elsewhere and brought there because cooking's in the bakery hoods, you know. And coffee is, you know, that will not require a commercial kitchen kind of a setup.
Who will be cleaning the terrace, the common space, how's that going to?
Yeah, that's what, it's all going to be maintained by, you know, the ownership and the terrace as, you know, a nice new area. I'll be sure to keep that clean, just let them keep the cars clean, all the common areas, the elevator, lobby. Be part of the responsibility on the garage, you know, if it is a common one.
Okay.
You have another witness?
I do, two more witnesses, very briefly, Mr. Dean, Dolan Dean here in town, our traffic engineer.
Mr. Dean, nice to see you again, sir. Please raise your right hand, you saw this word, testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, story, your last name for the record.
Gary Dean, D E A N. As Michael indicated, my business address is one eighty-one West High Street here in the borough. And we've been involved with this project since its inception and the last consideration by the board. I'm a licensed professional engineer and my license remains included standing.
We've been here many times.
Thank you, Mr. Jeremy, yes, I am. Just by way of brief introduction, I prepared and submitted a traffic impact study dated January twenty-fourth of this year in a letter to the board. It sets forth several components, one addresses parking, but it also addresses traffic impacts. One of the things that we've not considered in our study is that the subject properties represent an assemblage of buildings, as you know, right across the street. That at one time or another had certainly more active commercial type uses in addition to the apartments on the upper floors. So our traffic study essentially considers that those don't even exist as though this were a vacant site. The whole general thrust of being in a downtown area like Somerville is to take advantage of the train facilities and it becomes a very walkable type building. And we've had some experience not only in the borough with these projects, but in other, I'll say, walkable or transit oriented communities like Maplewood, like Summit, like Morris Town. And, and one of the things we found is that when people like to live in a, in a community such as this, it's simply for the reason that they don't need two and three cars. That households are either, they're smaller by, by nature of the units, but also the fact that people can walk to the train and get to work. And, you know, they need a car for the weekend to run errands, but it's generally not something that, that commands a whole lot of parking. And as a result, and at the encouragement of the board, the parking ratio for this project is just under one point five spaces per unit. We're, I'm sorry, yes, we're at one point four six. In comparison, the board has approved several other projects, including the apartments on Tavon Port that had a ratio of one point one. The Cobalt Building had a ratio of one point two. Station House was just over one and there was another building on Dowey that the Storms family did that I believe was at one point one space per unit. So by comparison, this, this proposal greatly exceeds all, all the rest of those buildings and the whole attendees. It doesn't unduly burden, you know, the other ones in resources for parking in a community. Your ordinance requires and it mirrors what's known as the RSI, is the Residential Site Improvement Standards. And those requirements are fairly simple, it's one point eight spaces for a one bedroom unit and two for a two bedroom unit. Built into that, those standards however, is a requirement of a half a space per unit for visitors and guests. So if we sort of segregate those components, we need parking for residents at one point three and one point five for the different unit types. And then we have visitors and guests. We actually comply with that standard for the residents. So I won't bore you with the math, but it, it works out to be eighty-five parking spaces required for the residents of the building and we have ninety-one. Now, we have a commercial component and I'd like to talk about that in a minute. But what I do want to say, and I know Mr. Cole raised this in his review, what about visitors and guests? Well, they will park on the street or they will park in the hamper lot or they will need to, you know, either Main Street or South Bridge. We don't have room for them, at least by ordinance. But I think what happened is, as, as we've studied the buildings, we're finding, I'll say, the, the real ratio of parking is about one point two. And that means this building would require seventy and that leaves twenty-one, while there's other visitors and guests. But the way these buildings typically are leased is when a tenant presents, they're told upfront, we have a limited amount of parking, you get one space per unit. And usually it works out, but if you need an extra space, there's an à la carte rental charge for that. And so the leasing agent essentially manages the parking. And, and we just finished a new building in Morris Town across from the hospital, it's not, not even, we're near the train station. And that's now leasing at, actual parking demand is under one point two. So it, it means in general, I believe through experience, this building will have a surplus and that's where the visitors and guests could go. The challenge becomes one of just operations. If the door is closed for security reasons, you know, then you get into codes and clickers and how that guest is allowed in. And maybe there's apps, you know, that can be done on a phone, we're not there yet. So for the time being, I, I think the expectation is we'll still need to accommodate those individuals off premises. The commercial component, as you've heard from Rocco, is seven hundred and seventy feet, it's smaller than this room. This room is almost a thousand square feet. And by the time we put in toilets and seating areas, you know, you spend fixtures, you start to see there's, it's, it's not big enough for a restaurant, you know, as indicated. It's a, maybe some kind of boutique retailer or a coffee shop or something of that. The needs for hoods and refrigerators and, and commercial kitchens, you know, you've now used up the whole space. So it, it will, my expectation is it will be something that's compatible with what we have on Main Street. And will serve, you know, the county admin building and the community in general. Obviously, we do have a surplus in parking and the employees for that component would be afforded codes or clickers or access to the garage so that they can park in the building during the day. The EV spaces, I want to commend someone who has a brand new Hyundai outside that is a really sharp car, it's the way of the future. And I've been driving an electric car for, I'm in my tenth year now. The loads are fairly small, it's just a two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty volt like dryer service on a fifty amp circuit. So it's the kind of thing that you could put in your house and, and the legislation requires a set aside, but they also require what's called maker ready. And what most builders are doing is putting in the conduits, sometimes they even put in the wires. And when there's a demand by tenants, they just fix an outlet on the wall and then the person can plug in. Or they contract with, there are certain companies that will put in, sort of like, I don't want to call it a dispenser, but, but a little stanchion that has the cord on it that will allow it to plug into the car. But I think the market will dictate that the applicant will want to have those spaces. So I think that, that it's, it's to be expected. The loading, as you've heard, we have a loading space inside the building for small vehicles. But then the natural question is what about a larger vehicle? And I think the ideal spot, in my opinion, is to convert one of the on-street metered parking spaces between the garage door and. Dave, you had an exhibit, right, may I use your sightline? Yeah, between the garage door and the alley to Warren Street. So I'm referring to a ten. And for reference, north is to the left, east is this way, the commercial space is in the northwest corner of the building. And we have a demarcated area anyway for sightlines outside of the garage entrance. And it only leaves enough room for one space, I think, between the visibility of the garage and the visibility of the alley. We want to make sure that we have the highest degree of safety for pedestrians. So my recommendation is, is that we keep that, we eliminate that on-street metered space. I, I suspect the mayor and the governing body would have to agree with that, but that's my recommendation.
Yeah, that's, that would be requested then.
And I think it, it does solve the practical issue of where the.
That's another meeting in itself.
I understand that, but that is, you know, as, as we had with the Oak building when I was here two weeks ago, their loading is on main. I think it does make sense to capitalize on that, I'll say, found area in that space and allow it to be used for. And aside from loading, it's Uber, Lyft, Revhub, you know, all of the, the type of drop-off services that multifamily buildings have, there's a need to accommodate that. We have it in the garage, but again, let's say someone orders, you know, a dinner delivery at night and the garage is closed. You know, but then that individual won't be able to get into the building, so. Pedestrian safety at the garage, one of the things that's come up in a, in a lot of these newer buildings is the concern that Michael raised, which is, not that it's a blind, I'll say, intersection of a garage that vehicles are emerging. But again, for pedestrian safety, there's a company called PASS, P A S S, and I think it's pedestrian actuated safety signs or something like that. And it's a, a sign that can either be affixed to the building or a little, you know, baller type design that is connected to a sensor in the building. And when a vehicle leaves, a light flashes and it says car exiting and there is a beaver. And, and it's very visible for, you know, we've all seen it, the pedestrian is walking down the street doing this. Aren't paying attention to where they're walking, so the audible component of that system is critical. And I will certainly provide a detail and a specification of that for Mr. Cole's review, but that would be my recommendation. I don't have a fancy exhibit I can show you, but they are high quality, nice aesthetic, it's not a, you know, something that'll get knocked over in the first snowstorm. It's a, and I think having it affixed for the building is the right place, only because we don't have a very wide sidewalk. You know, we have ten, fifteen, eighteen foot sidewalks and, however, in Jersey City, you can do a different design, but not here.
Sir.
Yes?
You said it's going to be an audible alarm as well?
Yes.
Now, how's that going to work for the guy who lives on, on the second floor?
It's, it's enough to get the attention of the pedestrian on the sidewalk, but it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's not even as loud as a backup on a bus or a truck. So it's, it's designed to be heard at grade level by, you know, six foot tall pedestrian, but.
And the flashing lights also.
Correct.
We've had a lot of success with rumble strips, but I guess that wouldn't work on a sidewalk.
No, but, but we, we have used a design where we've used the tactile warning system that, that are used for handicapped ramps and sidewalks. And we use, you know, yellows that are red or something like that, but, but that also, you know, someone steps on something, it feels different. So maybe that combination of elements, then oftentimes I just say belt suspenders, the parapolic mirror at the garage exits as well. So that, you know, it allows the driver to sort of see around the corner, but the combination of those. But the combination of those three elements, I think, is about as well-designed as we can have that.
How many parking spaces will we use on Bridge as a result if we include four?
Dave says, I'm sorry, four.
Including the one you talked about. There's three right there.
And with that, our, you know, our traffic study did assume that, sure, some people might drive to work, not everyone is going to walk, and we did include that component. And fortunately, as, because the traffic on South Bridge is metered both by the light at Main and further south, that we have very favorable levels of service seat leaving the garage. So, you know, typically, I'd expect that to be one or two cars. Our projections are 15 leaving in the morning in one hour. So it's one car every four minutes on average. I don't expect there to be any more than one car exiting at a time, so it's not going to interfere with circulation within the building. And beyond that, that's all I have, Michael. I didn't have something.
We'll agree to strike the fire lane.
You have a fire lane that's determined by the fire marshal. He tends to get 20 feet of the water. If you need six feet, six feet.
Oak can, they've been incredibly cooperative with Sam and their project, so we'll get that done.
I would consider the pedestrian warning system to be a condition of the rule.
Yes. And I will provide details for that to include the detectable warning surface in. The plans will reflect the parabolic mirror. So yeah, those three elements.
I think we're going to make the whole resolution conditional. Michael's report, so that's in there.
Yep.
Questions in there? Gary gave the testimony, probably want to handle it, which I suppose the mechanical mirror and audible and a flash of light, so I think it's the best you can do at this point.
I love to use terms like idiot-proof, but I mean, with that degree of, you know, it's almost a failsafe, redundant system to a redundant system. We're providing as much as we can so that drivers are aware and pedestrians are aware of the fact that there is an active garage there. As they would crossing any street or driveway, there's a responsibility on both sides.
They're crossing that alleyway, you know, a couple of steps further down, so.
I think one of the bigger benefits is the combination of this project and Oak is particularly Oak, they're getting rid of that building immediately to the north of the alley, so it's going to open up the view shed for everyone walking down there.
Okay, any other questions? I'll open it up to the public for questions of this witness. You're in the closed public session. Thank you, Gary.
Our final witness is Elizabeth McManus.
Kyle McManus. Do you saw me for the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sorry, it's Elizabeth McManus, M-C-M, A-N-U-S.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Ms. McManus, could you just provide to the board some other towns that you represent as a professional planner?
I think you have a town. Did I represent or represent?
I would say both.
Both, okay. I represent the borough of Plumington. I also represent the borough of Franklin Lakes, the borough of Ridgewood, Esbury Park, Jersey City, Carthamboy as well. I testified in a number of municipalities, although not here, places such as and not limited to Union Township, Rock Hill Township, New Brunswick, Scataway, Long Hill, Princeton Borough, St. Trenton, Hopewell Borough, and Township, and stuff all over locations.
Would I say Ms. McManus be accepted as an expert and professional planner?
She's a planner, right? She's paid there.
That's what I'm going to say.
I am also, yes, I'm a planner. My license is in good standing. I'm a member of the American Institute Certified Planner, so I hold my AICT. I'm also a New Jersey professional planner, and then I hold my NJCP.
You would say.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you. So I'm here tonight because we do have some variances that we're looking for the board to give us some relief on, and I'll review those very quickly, then I'll go through each one in more detail. So just to remind the board of the list of items of relief that we're looking for is the lot area, minimum depth. We also require relief for the rear yard setback, as well as the side yard to height ratio, if you will, the minimum parking spaces, the minimum window area, and then we also require relief from your lighting standards and the minimum one, the minimum one-bedroom unit standards. And then, I actually am unsure about this last item, street trees. I know that we are not providing the street trees, but we agreed to a donation, so I'm not sure if that requires relief or if that's.
It's a waiver.
Okay, okay. So with that, let me start with the first two variances in my list, which include the minimum lot area and the minimum lot depth. So both of these are largely existing conditions in the sense that they reflect the existing lot lines of the tract of land that we are working with. So the minimum lot area, as I've said, or as we've heard already, the minimum lot area is 24,000 per feet. We are, we have a minimum or an existing lot area of 23,432 feet, and I think that that is a de minimis lot area. It is just 568 square feet that we are short, if you will, or it's about 2% of the lot, the minimum lot size. For our lot depth, we are at 180 versus, which is required, versus approximately 160 feet. I recommend that these variances be granted through both the C1 variance criteria as well as the C2 variance criteria. I'm citing the C1, which is the hardship criteria, because these are lot conditions based on our existing tract configurations. These are existing lot areas that we're working with, and simply we're not able to pick up additional lots on either side of a property that would allow us to hear the conditions. I also think that the board can find that these are C2 variances, which is the flexible C or the benefits versus detriment variance, because I think that this creates a better zoning alternative, creates a better project. And I say that because it allows for, it allows for us to simply work with these existing lots, these existing buildings. And what that does is it allows for, albeit a smaller redevelopment of the parcels, but it's a bit of a slower approach, and it allows for change to be more gradual, it allows for the perceived impact of each application to be a little bit less. And so I think that there's actually a benefit to having a little bit less of a lot area, a little bit less of a lot width in this particular case. Our next variance that I'd like to address is the minimum parking. So we've just heard Mr. Dean provide pretty extensive testimony, and I've got to echo some of that for you. I think that our parking relief can be granted through the C2, the flexible or the benefits versus detriment C variance. And I say that first by taking a look at the purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced, and I'm citing purpose M, which is to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening costs of such development and the more efficient use of land. And so I'm citing this particular purpose because the reduced parking allows for us to create a more efficient project and to do so without excess parking, without waste. As we've heard that from Mr. Dean, the parking that we're proposing is at a ratio of 1.46 spaces per unit. However, the anticipated parking demand is actually just 1.2 parking spaces per unit. By providing just the 91 parking spaces rather than, rather than the full, I'm sorry, yeah, 117, I guess, rather than providing a full 117, means that we're able to create a more efficient building design, a more efficient parking design, but additionally, we're also able to be more efficient about our use of materials and our use of energy for the construction of the project. And I think that's a benefit for this municipality and really just about any place where we can lessen the energy influx to a project. And so for these reasons, I think that we do support that purpose M by creating this more efficient design for the building and for the site. The next group of variances I'd like to address are the minimum rear yard. We are required to have 25 feet, but instead we are proposing 13 feet. The second variance in this category, as I've categorized them, is that side yard to height ratio, where it requires that the height shall not exceed one foot for each foot of horizontal distance. Now, as we, as you may have seen in the plans and we've heard Mr. Campanella testify, we have a setback at the ground of just 16 feet, and we are unable to move our side yard setback through the store, through the upper stories of the building sufficient for one foot, one foot of setback or one foot of height in the building. And the reason why is because ultimately, it's for a couple reasons, but ultimately, fundamentally, what it does is it prevents us from creating a project, from creating redevelopment on this property that is viable. At some point, we need a building that creates sufficient scale that we're able to create a building that's capable and viable to produce redevelopment. But in addition to that, more in line with the municipal land use law, there are two purposes of the MLUL that I think this, these particular variances support. The first is purpose I, which is to promote desirable visual environment and creative development techniques in good civic design and arrangement, and also purpose B, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment. Now, I've cited these two purposes of the MLUL for our rear yard as well as our side to height ratio, because I see the design that we proposed with our undersized setbacks as better facilitating that density on the site that, yes, makes it a viable design, but also best effectuates the purposes of your redevelopment area, redevelopment plan model, which I'll go through when I address the negative criteria, and also better address the vision for the community. In terms of the visual impact of this, I will say also that, and we've heard some testimony from Mr. Campanella about this, we have done our best to honor the intent of the ordinance. Specifically, we've tried to create a balance between pushing our building back away from South Bridge Street to the extent possible, while also maintaining an appropriate rear yard setback. And we've also done our best to try to step back the upper stories of our, of our building along that side or that southern property line. As you may recall from our earlier exhibits, we have setbacks on the second floor as well as on the fourth floor, where the building steps back, provides a patio area. And so we've done that in order to honor the intent of the area, and I think the result is actually a very pleasing building and one that, that has setbacks that, that appear aesthetically pleasing and not perhaps that are a bit awkward given the size of the property. Our next variance addresses the window area. We are required to provide along that first floor facing the street 40% of our facade as window area, as glass area. We are instead proposing 26%. And I have, I have two purposes of the municipal land use law under the C2 variance criteria that I think are relevant. The first is purpose C, which is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. And the second is purpose I, which is to promote desirable visual environment, creative development techniques, and good civic design and arrangement. Now, I've cited purpose C because the reason why we can't comply with that 42% is because, quite frankly, we need additional airflow through that first floor of the building. We need to have cross ventilation in order to create a safe environment for the residents that are going to be accessing and walking through that parking garage. And so we literally need adequate air flowing through that area. I think that we've also, another important piece of this I wanted to highlight that we heard in earlier testimony, is that if those lovers on the parking garage were indeed composed of glass, we would actually comply with the requirement. We would be at near 43%, 42.75. And so we have created a design of the building that uses the lovers in a way that do their best to sort of mimic the appearance of the glass. So it creates this visual interest on the first floor of the facade while still providing that airflow that we need. And the other last item I want to highlight that we heard this evening is that we have agreed to limit those louver areas in favor of glass or replace them with glass to the maximum extent possible. Of course, we need to maintain adequate airflow for the garage, but to the extent that we can make that change, we certainly will do so. And that will move us towards compliance with that 40%, but I don't expect that we're going to get to the 40%, so we do indeed still require a relief from the board. Our next item of relief that I wanted to address is the minimum one-bedroom size, excuse me, minimum one-bedroom number of units. We are required to have 35%, and we are proposing 22%. One thing I wanted to emphasize to the board is the fact that that change, or excuse me, that relief has occurred in response to some of the concerns that we've heard during our earlier application. We have increased the size of the units and now include additional two-bedroom units. I'm also presenting this variance as a C2 variance with the purpose that is being supported being purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment. And so providing larger units are appropriate in order to ensure there's adequate housing for small families. And also, so that's families on the younger side, perhaps those without kids, and also on the other side for empty masters. And so we have made this change, and we are requesting relief in order to really provide housing for a wider range of families. So typically, we might have additional one-bedroom units, but providing the two-bedroom units were able to continue by providing still number of one-bedrooms as well as these two bedrooms were able to still serve those two populations on either side of the spectrum, those younger families without kids and empty masters, but still be able to provide a larger variety than what your ordinance otherwise requires. And I think that this is not inconsistent with what we see here in Somerville. If I take a look at your average household sizes, I see for 2020, the average household size of 2.49 people and the average family size of 3.1 people. And so as I look at these, these units, these family and household sizes that are a little bit bigger than what we see on average, I think it makes sense that we would provide additional two-bedroom units. And the last item of relief, before I address the negative criteria, is in regard to the lighting. So we have two items that we're seeking relief on. The first is that uniformity ratio, we're required to be at 4:1, and instead we're at And we also have a site illumination maximum of five-foot handles of property line versus we're at about 27-foot handles. Now, these are, and I should say these are exceptions rather than variances or waivers rather than variances. And so the question before all of you is not simply what purpose of the municipal land use law does this relief support, but rather, is it reasonable? Is it appropriate? And so as I look at our lighting plan, I think the answer is yes, because what we see is the areas of greatest light intensity at that parking garage access. And so that is the, perhaps one of, if not the, most important location on the property in terms of safety. And so we've provided adequate light in this area to make sure that anybody walking by will be seen, and anybody, well, I can't imagine missing a vehicle, but just in case we have light for the pedestrians as well. But ultimately, the lighting in this area will ensure that pedestrians can cross the property safely without fear of not being seen by motorist who apply. And that. And that increased uniformity ratio is essentially for, for similar reasons. So it's, one side of that is because we have increased lighting levels along the property line at this garage entrance, but on the flip side, uh, it also means that we have very little lighting on other property lines. So we have lighting as little as zero or perhaps 0.1 foot candles along that rear property line. So we've taken care to provide maximum safety along the street front, along South Bridge, and the minimum amount of lighting that we can possibly provide at the rear property lines where it's just simply not necessary for our purposes. And so that's the, the positive criteria, but let me talk a little bit about the, the negative criteria for, for these items. And so of course, we have, uh, two different components of the negative criteria, first being, uh, the, and whether there's any substantial detriment to the zone plan, and the second is whether there's any substantial detriment to the public good. In terms of the, the zone plan, I don't think so. As I've looked at your redevelopment area, excuse me, redevelopment plan objectives, the ECBD area, what I see are a handful of objectives that I'll cite in just a moment that are supportive. I also see a number of, uh, policies in your 2019 master plan that are supportive. So for example, in the 2019 master plan, I see a goal stating to provide a range of housing types to meet varied resident population needs as well as to preserve established residential areas and promote redevelopment by establishing redevelopment areas. I think we're clearly in line with that, particularly in regard to, uh, meeting varied resident, residence, population needs if you think about the, the distribution of one bedroom and the two bedroom apartments that we're proposing. Additionally, there's a master plan policy to simply locate housing in selected locations within and around the central business district to stimulate business and retail activity beyond traditional work hours. Our application is directly in line. We're putting residents within a block of your main street so that more people can quickly and conveniently and easily walk, maybe bike all over the downtown and access your shops and services. We also have a master plan economic policy to maintain the economic viability of the central business district by improving its physical appearance and introducing new compatible revenue-producing land uses. While we're a little bit off from the industry, I think that we're still relevant to this because we're, we're simply contributing to improving the physical appearance of the property and certainly contributing for our residents, uh, better support for your downtown businesses. We also have, uh, another policy to encourage architectural compatibility within, uh, the central business district. I think as you've heard, our building is, is really, and as you view the rendering, our building is a huge improvement over what's existing and it's going to be compatible with what we see, uh, along your downtown. In terms of the redevelopment plan, there are, as I said before, a handful of goals and objectives that I think are relevant. Um, I'll start with to reinforce and support the retail base of the central business district through general redevelopment of the area, promoting an appropriate mixture of retail, service, office, residential uses, prohibiting inappropriate uses, providing additional parking for shoppers, employees, and residents, and encouraging aesthetic improvements. I really mean we are directly in line with just about every part of this objective. We're adding residents, we're adding a small retail space, we're providing enough parking for folks on site, and we're doing a huge improvement to the appearance of this, uh, portion of South Bridge Street. Additionally, there's a, a goal and objective to provide improved housing conditions through the development of new dwelling units, including both market rate and affordable housing. We are directly in line with this goal. And then lastly, to improve the aesthetic appearance of the area through general redevelopment, upgraded design, increased landscaping, buffers, and screening and attractive uses of unattractive uses. We are directly in line with this as well, except screening of unattractive uses, but quite frankly, we don't have any on this property, so there's no need for it. Our building is, is quite beautiful and we're going to be doing an improvement to this area of the borough. That last component of the negative criteria, which is whether there's any substantial detriment to the public good, quite frankly, I think there's no, uh, no detriment to the public good, much less any substantial detriment to the public good. And, and I say that for a lot of the reasons that you've already heard, me, Sait, as well as our other, uh, team members, this building is, it is in line with the vision for the community. We have produced architecture that I think is, is really nice. It's compatible with what we see in the rest of Somerville, and it's going to be a significant upgrade to this section of, uh, South Bridge Street. And I think it's also going to complement some of the other work that we see, uh, or not work, but some of the other developments that we see as being, uh, just instructed or, or perhaps even just approved a matter of a couple of weeks ago. And so as I look at the, the proposal as a whole, I see this as a positive for the borough of Somerville. And as I view the individual variances that I've gone through today, I don't think either of these are significant enough to be a detriment to the public good. We've done our best to provide mitigation and to accommodate the intent of, of your regulations wherever possible. And we've done that through, uh, just for a couple of the examples, the way that we just, uh, stepped back the building to the extent possible along that southern property line. Uh, and we've also provided some landscaping and fencing in this area to further mitigate the impact from that setback. And we have, uh, additional techniques in place to, to help, uh, minimize some of the other impacts from our other items of relief, uh, such as that wiggle area along the front facade. As I indicated, we have lovers that contribute towards the, uh, the architectural intent, and we've agreed to move towards compliance the maximum extent possible. And for the street trees, that last item I almost forgot to address, I should say, also, uh, we are requesting relief for that. We have agreed to do a contribution, but in terms of relief, the purpose in doing so is to promote the, uh, the safety of, and the safety of pedestrians as they pass the site by removing the street trees that provide a wider sidewalk area, which as this portion of Somerville redevelops, is, becomes more important because you're likely to have more pedestrians on the street. And additionally, the likelihood that you'll have a pedestrian that, uh, uses a wheelchair or perhaps other mobility devices is going to get increased. And so providing a wider sidewalk will also be a benefit to those residents, more of a benefit to those residents in fact. And so with that, that's my testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I kind of like this. I write this stuff and you say it.
Michael, she says it bad when you say it.
Oh, I know.
I will open it up to public for, uh, questions of this witness. All right. Um, I'll keep it open to the public for comments. Anybody have any comments? All right, I'll close the public session. Um, there is one item of Michael's report that you didn't mention, and that was, uh, wall signs projection. And I assume because you're not asking for a variance on that, you don't need one?
Yeah, we're going to comply with signage. We don't, we, the intent is probably to just use a number. Uh, there's a small area above the, uh, the entrance to the parking deck that's noted on the architectural plans with the name. Still haven't hammered down the, the name of the project or the, the street number, but, uh, it's, it's out of compliance.
Okay. All right, I'll start off. I, I liked this project before. I thought that it was heavily related with variances. I think you've done a very good job of changing this project in a significant way so that you've addressed, I think you've addressed many of the board's concerns that were expressed last year. Um, I'm interested in favor of it.
I'll, I'll continue. It's, it's easy to build a highway or a farm where there's no constraints. You have, you have land, you have access. This is basically an infill project, and I like the, the flexibility that, that the applicant's shown. The height reduction was, was significant. It is less than could be allowed under the existing redevelopment plan. So the, the height impact has been lessened. Parking, although it still requires a variance, is, is, is much, much more compatible than the original proposal. I think the market will dictate parking. If I had two cars, I'm not living here. There's plenty of other places to go. So I like, I like the, uh, the thought that's gone into it. The aesthetics look good, the rooftop dining, the rooftop access, rather, is a full complement. I think the rooftop dining up the street is a good feature. It's a, it's a creative use of more space, and, uh, I would be in favor of it.
I just have one question when it comes to the parking. So we've had in the past circumstances where there was enough parking, but they, um, the parking wasn't included in the rent price, and so people said, didn't pay for the parking and started parking on the streets and other places to breathe. So my question is, in this building, are you, is the parking one spot going to be attached to the rent of the apartment? Because, um, that's where we're having problems in town, is when they fabricate that and then people don't want to pay the extra charge and start parking all over town. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'll, you know, I, I think the sensible thing--
Why don't you come up and testify? I'm sorry. Okay. Yes? Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this manner will be the truth. So hope you got--
Okay, I agree.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record and--
Sudhaka Perkari, P-E-R-K-A-R-I. Very good. Also call me Sam.
Very good, sir. Counselor, would you, uh--
Could you just give just a little brief background to the people that don't know who, who you are and what you do, how long you've been operating in Somerville?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mike. Chairman, Sumayer, and board, my name is Sudhaka Perkari, and I've been, um, associated with Somerville since 1993. And I'm a small business owner, operate, uh, tap lickers, and I have seen this town grow so nicely with your hard work. I've known most of you, including Mike. And you have done a fantastic job besides that. Over the years, because I'm associated in Somerville, I've seen the wonderful, how wonderful it is, and what a great, uh, thing to have property here. So I started acquiring some of these smaller, uh, units, and it took me several years to build up to four units now. Now, it's the American dream to come before you, to ask for your, you know, to listen to this, my proposal. And I'm really happy that you, you, you are considered enough to listen to this project. And to the question that you were asking about the, um, the renters and, and their requirement to park, I think at least we'll, we'll offer one, in my opinion, uh, one parking space for each apartment, and if they have more, uh, we, we can, we can actually offer them two if it's available. So that's, uh, my initial reaction to your question. Thank you so much.
Any questions for the witnesses? Any, any questions?
A cou- a couple just quick questions, um, just to make sure I understand it right. Okay, he said, so we're going to lose the three or possibly four spots that are currently metered parking on the street for this proposal?
Yes.
So that's, okay, and again, that's just, you know, as all of us know, you may not get parking to come to this meeting. So that, you know, where, where, I, I, I know you're saying you have enough parking for the residents. It is impacting that you're taking away public spaces and then saying visitor, visitors go find more public spaces as well. That was just one of my, um, things. I just wanted to make sure we're all aware that we're losing those spots. Have you noticed here?
I know, Jason. I parked there for me because I figured if they don't know where my car is, they won't do anything. Like fusions. Now, I'm just going to have to park in the cheap spot--
Well, that's why you have to scratch your car today.
Then again--
If you've come on time, you'll be able to park in a close spot.
Of course, I may be fortunate enough not to be able, not to have to park there once this is done. Then again, you never know. But--
The, one of the other notes I had just had is about the one, um, the amount of one bedroom apartments. And in hearing, um, Elizabeth, when you, when you were giving the testimony, it's for small families, I think that was part of the reason we wanted the one bedroom is to not over any data schools, uh, because, you know, that does come out anytime we have a--
Yeah, it does. But we talk about this all the time. And, and the, the practical reality is--
They don't.
Couple moves in, they have a baby--
And they leave.
Within two or three years, they go, there's no friendly place for the kid to be on Main Street or South Bridge or North Bridge anymore.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
And they, and they go on by their own size.
I, I, no, I agree. None comes from--
Kids are not necessarily the issue--
I just want to point out that that's, that, that we're not looking, that the project isn't looking to bring small families into it. I don't think that's the intent of, of Colin. Colin's got his hand up.
And we, we, not going to interrupt your book. Very, I hate to agree with him, but he's right.
Easy now.
I, I agree. None comes from us. I always want to become the testimony.
He knows, because parking's a great place. It's on--
Because I'm sure we're going to get those goals later. I said, we're, we're designing a project to bring kids in.
And hey, son, you gotta, you gotta be prepared to address the question with the facts, and the fact is that the closer you get to Main Street, the fewer children you have in the school system. That's, that's just the way it is. And it's not just that way here, it's that way in just about every day, urban environment that we have, other than in, in the big cities. So--
I, I kind of take the opposite view here that we have a plethora of one bedroom apartments, which excludes many people from renting apartments in Somerville. I'm very happy that we see the large number of two bedroom apartments because I'm older than everybody here, and we have three adults in my family, and if we ever get to the point where we like to rent that big four bedroom house, a two bedroom apartment might be better than, so we would never do a one bedroom. So I can see, uh, people who wish to downsize a little bit, but don't want to get a condominium or that kind of thing, move to an apartment. These are not bad, the sizes.
Oh, I, I don't have an issue with that variant. I was, I just more wanted it stated that we're granting the variance based on the fact that we want kids moving into this apartment.
Well, I think the term family, you have to be careful about too, because you can be just a married couple and be considered a family in statistics. So language kind of is scary to people when you say family and they think kids, but--
I do.
Yeah, basically, a married couple is considered a family when they're doing their house.
And I, my kid's 44, so I mean--
We're going down, we're dead in the weeds.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, anybody else want to discuss the matter?
Well, I want to thank them for, um, making the changes they did in adding, containing all their parking on site and, um, working as hard as they can to, um, make it fit on the site, lowering the number of apartments. Still not super comfortable with the setbacks on that one side, but the images that you showed, um, looking up the street to South Bridge, convinced me that it's not going to be a huge impact on those few residential houses that are down in that area. So I think it's, you know, it's always been a nice building, it's just whether it was too big for the size.
Anybody else?
I came in on the third act here because I was privy to this first presentation in the redevelopment committee, and this is much, much better. Far--
Yep. Much, much better. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the application.
I'll second it.
With--
With all--
There we go. The conditions--
We're all getting out lined with the--
The attorney.
Exactly, exactly. We have, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven variances--
Yep.
And three waivers.
Correct.
And the waivers are requested under section 51 of the MLUL and the, uh, I would, not that I'm disagreeing with, uh, Ms. McNabb, it seemed to me that the majority of variances can be granted under C2, 70 C2. Though there are certain internal limitations and size limitations to the property, I believe the issues, the, the, uh, uh, the application advances the purposes of zoning, the various requests advance the--
advance the purposes of zoning as they must under C2 to enable the benefits of the development outweigh the detriments. And I do think the citation of sections E and I, as well as some others, under the, under section D2, I think is, you know, my professional opinion, and I believe is persuasive.
Okay, so you agree?
I was going to say the same thing.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Where are we going with this?
That's what, that's what law school does to you. I go out every night of the week, and, you know, I've never appeared before your board, so I take the conservative approach, whereas if I've gone to a board, if I've gone to a board for years, and they know what I'm going to say, it's okay. Here, I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure that the record reflects what we're doing, and if there's a problem, then we cover ourselves.
Okay. So those variances, and we're going to make the, any approval subject to Michael's report. Anything else?
Do you have other conditions?
Is the ADA a condition?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, go on, enter redevelopment agreement with the borough, the form of content to be agreed, to be approved by the borough attorney.
Right.
Or if the board wishes, I can approve it. Compliance with the call report, except if it's modified during the hearing on the resolution. Provision of a construction phasing plan.
And if the Director of Economic Development will coordinate twenty-four-seven, answer everybody's phone call.
The cell phone will be in the resolution.
Okay. That happens anyhow.
Pedestrian warning to be installed by applicant, fire lane to be striped. And I believe that's it.
Compliance with the fire marshal...
Oh, of course. Our standard conditions of...
Right. Right. We'll, the standards will work that out.
Fire marshal, county, state, et cetera. So I already put, I put those in as well. You get, you get those with the deal. Andrew, yes.
Andrew, Braden Bott, Fugilisinski.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Andrew Dyer, yes. Al Karski.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
Art Aitken.
Yes.
Larry Clifford.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Recorder, may I make arrangements with you to get a copy of the transcript or perhaps...
Congratulations.
I walked off without my phone.
I wanted to get the, I wanted to get the... Yeah, we will. You know Jeff Lehrer?
Jeff Lehrer.
Hearing the common comment.
He's going to help.
Seconded.